All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to bring the meeting for Rutland Town School Board to order at 6:02. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, to the republic, and to God. Linda, would you care to share the...
I would love to share the vision and mission. Engaged, empowered, and prepared for tomorrow. Our mission is to engage and empower students to achieve academic and personal success, preparing them to be responsible citizens who embrace a love for learning.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, well done. I wondered if I could suggest addition? And that would be to just update on the Communication Committee because there's been some good work that's been done that I would hope that the community would want to know about.
Yeah, I was just gonna, since we're gonna be talking about budget and that's primarily what our focus is on that committee, I just marked it down to make sure that we incorporate that in the conversation.
Okay, so Dirty, I'm here. In fashion.
Based on your request, I just kinda jotted a note down to make sure we talked about it during the budget portions. But I would look to add, we have two retirements that are information only, but I just wanna be able to present those under personnel, so I would look to add that. Any other additions or deletions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion by Jeff. All right, staff and student highlights.
We have Megan Martell, kindergarten teacher that is here to talk about Forest Friday. Was Megan Meara able to join us, or?
I don't think so.
Okay, okay.
So this year, Megan and I really decided to undertake an exciting project, which was to revamp our existing Forest Friday curriculum. We've been aiming to elevate our learning experiences and maximize educational outcomes, and we focused in two main areas. So the first area is integrating stronger curriculum alignment, so making sure all of our activities align with the NGSS standards. And then the second one is being really intentional with skill development, so designing activities to better foster executive functioning skills such as planning, self-regulation, and sustained attention.
Do you want us to go through the slides? Like, wait, okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Just give us a signal.
Okay. So some of the benefits of Forest Friday, outdoor exploration builds curiosity, imagination. We've seen sticks become microphones, and puppets, and conductor batons, and magic wands. Students are building their confidence, problem-solving and communication skills. Being outside supports motor development, encourages safe and appropriate risk-taking, working on our skills of being independent and resilient. You can go ahead and click those on these pictures. So we spend every Friday afternoon going outside, rain or shine. We have a cute little song the kids love to sing when we go out. We have a new spot this year, so we had a community night where some parents came and helped us clear our spot. We have a kind of a plug for the PTO. They donated a weather-tight box for us, so we don't have to lug all of our materials out every time. We can leave some stuff out there, which has been so helpful. Also, a huge thank you to Kelly and Trey, who have been building us a mud kitchen, which we're really excited to be able to use.
I thought about that a few years ago.
We just have a bunch of pictures showcasing what we've been doing outside.
Okay, Megan, a couple things. So Megan and Megan are two, both last names start with M as well, two amazing kindergarten teachers. Our goal for the whole SU is really focusing on student engagement this year. So they both came to me and they said, you know, with this goal on engagement, we really wanna bring back fully Forest Friday. And I think Linda, you had shared as a previous kindergarten teacher, she's like, oh my goodness, 'cause she did this too with Megan and Megan.
Yeah, Megan got us started. It was all Megan, and I was so fortunate to work with her. It was one of my favorite things of my whole career.
Oh, yeah. So I was able to do a formal observation observing both, so typing like Megan and Megan, different spelling thankfully, took a little while. But the excitement of the kids that are out there, but the amount of planning that it takes and the supplies, it's a ton of work. But they are so incredibly engaged and so many connections with math and literacy and science. They were talking about habitats, squirrels, acorns, different types of trees, counting collections. And so they have like a start of a storage unit out there, so they had things on clotheslines, and it was just, it doesn't get much better than this.
So I asked the kids what their favorite thing about Forest Friday, so I have a few quotes from some of our kids. One of them said, "Friday is the best day of the week because we get to do Forest Friday." They love that we get to learn new things that I never knew about. One kid said, "I love seeing the snakes." We have seen a few snakes. "I love when we sing our song and when we collect forest things." One of the girls said, "I'm excited to go to Forest Friday when there's snow on the ground and that they get to spend time with their friends in the other class," because we both classes go at the same time. They liked learning and finding acorns and building dens. So it's definitely the highlight of the week is getting to go out there for Forest Friday.
And I know that Colby was able to join. It was before our Rutland, it was a busy night, 'cause we had the parents, Megan and Megan invited parents to come help to clear the space, so we had a number of parent volunteers that came with some tools. Mr. Huscock went out to help, and then we also had our Rutland Town wreck spooky trail, and then we ended with a middle school dance.
Wow.
Yeah, and that was the day that the Agency of Education and Licorant Moderating visited. It was a busy day. And just to see these kids use their imagination and read and write and just, it's a breath of fresh air. So these are all of these posters that they bring out and they prep.
So we're trying to keep a list of all the fun and interesting things that we find each week.
This is Martin, he'll say, "No, that's not coming inside." "Oh, I wanna show my pop up." Like, "No, Burton's not coming inside." Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate that. All right, teacher staff, community comments.
Good luck with my kids and rocks next year and not coming inside.
Better than snakes. Or animal poo. Another one.
Russ is convinced we have like 3,000 pieces of plastic in the basement for his robot he's gonna build. Every time, "Plastic box, put this in the basement with my robot." I'm like, "Yeah, okay buddy."
We ran a piece of metal to join up for our robot.
Oh, man.
I'm sure with the Max Steel one, they get more junk metal.
Teacher staff, community comments. I don't see anyone. Katie's good, right? She just listening?
Yeah, I think Katie's just hopping on to listen in. And her and Jen, I believe, are coming to January meeting to talk about all their work for the grant that they got.
Perfect. I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Finance. There we go. Any questions on the monthly reports before I move on to... Louis, you wanna take it away on the next two topics?
Yes, so we'll start with the announced tuition. So each year, we have to set a tuition rate for students who are not Rutland Town residents who wanna attend Rutland Town School. So our current tuition rate is $18,000, and that's for K through 8. So in the packet was some information on other schools in our area and what they're charging, as well as my recommendation for FY '27. We can go with that amount, we can go higher, whatever the board would like to do. So for elementary school, we're currently charging 18. I'm recommending 18,500. And for secondary, which is just 7th and 8th grade for Rutland Town, we're currently charging 18 as well, and I'm recommending 18,500. When looking at the other area comps, it's not really too comparable for the secondary because those are mainly for 7th through 12, and generally, the high school students, the rate is higher. So, and all of these other schools that are listed here are, do run a 7th through 12 program, except for Rutland Town. We, in the past, in the past few years, Rutland Town has kept the rate the same for the elementary school and for middle school. We don't have to, we can set a different rate. It's really up to the board.
Louis, can I, I think last year was the first year we had it the same.
Uh, I know last year it was, so I'd have to look back.
I think it was nice when parents were inquiring about tuitioning their children here. I think we kept it the same as of last year.
Last year was definitely the same.
Okay, yep.
I'm good with rates. Question, so these tuition kids, if they're here September, they are here, they're one of our equalized pupils?
If they're not from, if they're not residents of Rutland Town, they don't count in our equalized people count. They would count, if they're from IRA, they would count an IRA's count and an IRA's paying you.
Yeah.
So you get the revenue that way. And for next year, I budgeted for six students. I think we currently have seven anticipated to come, but just to be conservative, I went
Make a motion to approve CFO's 18,500 recommendation?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so on the budget, so last month, we looked at the first draft, and at that time, total expense was down about $34,000, and education spending was up about $208,000, which is a little less than 2%. And that was mainly due to less one-time revenue. So tonight, we're looking at draft two, and right now, total expense is up by $9,000, which is a little, approximately 1/10 of a percent. Education spending is up by $251,000, which is 2.3%. As we discussed last month, one of the main reasons why our budget is not up significant this year is because last year, we had a lot of one-time revenue, and so we put a large expense item into the budget under repairs to do some one-time needed repairs for HVAC, as well as the floor replacement and asbestos payment. So with those items coming out, it's a significant decrease in expense, which is then also lowering our education spending. Some of the other changes that are in this, into the second draft, I updated our vocational tuition amount, those are the students that are attending Stafford. The SU assessment is based on draft three. The SU board did approve the budget last night, there was no changes based on draft three, so those final numbers won't change. I also updated our tuition numbers. This budget, we talked about this a little bit last month, right now, you have a very large 7th grade, right? So the number of students that are graduating 8th grade for next year is a lot less than your 7th grade. I think the difference is about 18 students. And so rather than take all of those savings this year and then have to increase the budget by hundreds of thousands of dollars next year, to the tune of, I think, like 18 students at about $20,000 to $22,000 per student, I did keep 10 extra students in this budget, which is about $220,000. So the board can decide how they wanna handle it, we can take that out and then add it back, but taxpayers will see an even larger dip in the tax rate this year, and then a large spike next year when we have to put those students in. So I think there's 46 students in 7th grade. Sound about right, Sarah?
We have 42 in 7th grade, and this 8th grade class, it's been a small cohort this whole time. There's only 27 students. And just remember, we graduated 50 students last year, so that's a larger pocket that Louis follows that cohort because we pay for their high school. So he did, I'm sure you did something similar with funds, knowing that that larger cohort was coming.
So one of the other options, rather than put this money in tuition and then have a large surpluses, we could also look at what projects that we have that need to be done in the building, and maybe take it out of tuition and move it to a specific repairs item, and then next year, once that repair item is done, we can then move it back to tuition. So that's something that the board can discuss, sort of like we did with the other projects. I added funding for one long-term sub, so that each year, we have the teachers that go out on either maternity leave, and we have to hire a long-term sub for 30 to 60 days. In the past, we haven't really budgeted for that, since the budget wasn't in pretty good shape this year, I did put additional funding in for that, because it has been sort of a norm here in Rutland Town. I also increased the repairs budget by $90,000 for the project that we discussed last month for the gymnasium or the auditorium. So that's what's in this budget, and then I do have a bunch of other items for discussion. Some of them are executive session, and then some of them aren't. If you wanna talk about what we've already talked about first, and then we can go over the other items, or do you want me to list all the items for public session first, and then we can go back to them?
I'm not sure. I'll take your direction, I guess. So a few...
Well, I'll put the other items on the table, and then we can kinda go back to discuss each one of them. So there has been mention about bleachers project. I don't know if that's something the board wants to move forward with. There's also been, it was brought up about possibly funding for the 8th grade trip, and looks like the rest we can discuss in executive session.
I have an ignorant question that you could help me with. What's the difference between total expense being up and expended, total expended education spending?
Total expenses, money that's going out the door. So that's all of our staffing, our transportation, supplies, all the bills that we have to pay.
Yeah, that's barely...
Education spending is the amount we have to raise in property taxes.
Oh, it's the opposite.
And so to calculate education spending, we take our total expense minus any revenues that we're receiving that are not property taxes. So our tuition revenue, surplus, interest income, any grants that we're receiving, refunds that we get from the SU for surpluses, all that comes off of the expense, and that's what you're left with, is your education spending.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So that's gone down 'cause some grants or tuition has changed from last year.
So last year, we had more one-time revenues, mainly being surplus. So last year, we had a lot larger surplus, we had $424,000, and this year, we're only using 260, we only had $265,000.
And what X-factors are still on the plate for us as far as...
That are not included in this budget?
Or, yeah, just like...
So I think the things that we need to decide, one, how we wanna handle those tuition students, whether we wanna leave it as is or move it to some sort of repair. How we wanna handle the surplus that's in here, which is $265,000. Whether we want to account for repair, replacement of the bleachers, and the 8th grade trip. Those are the items that I have.
I mean, I feel like what I'm seeing now is pretty palatable, right? But what can, so the only changes that you see as far as education spending is what we decided to adjust or move here? Or like, what's coming from the state that is still questionable, and do you have any feeling?
So as far as education spending, that number is based on what we do here at this table. The state-level data does not impact education spending, it only impacts the tax rate. And so if you want, we can go to the, we can move over to the tax rate and then come back. So in the packet was an estimate on what our tax rate may look like, based on what we know today. So with education spending being up by 2.34%, we do have an estimate on our long-term weighted ADM, and that number is pretty close to our last year ADM. So last year, we were at 791. That is a weighted number, so it takes our total student count, pre-K through 12, and then the state weights it based on several different factors. So last year was 791.86, and this year, our preliminary estimate is 791.6, so very close. So that brings our education spending per pupil to $13,909, which is a 2.37% increase over last year. Still, I think that's in good shape. The property yield, this is a number that is set by the legislators, it's not set until after town meeting day.
Yeah.
But what typically we do use is the Tax Commissioner's recommendation. Based on his December 1st letter, he's recommending an increase of 2.94%, which would be a yield of $8,849. And that's based on several different statewide factors, including an estimate of an increase in spending statewide, CLAs statewide, as well as pupil counts decreasing or increasing statewide, as well as other conditions of the Ed Fund. So looking at our tax rate, we know our incentive is gonna decrease by 20%. We received, a couple years ago, we received an incentive based on the change to Act 127. That's going down to 14 cents. So before CLA, our tax rate is at $1.43, which is a 2.74% increase. Right now, I'm estimating the CLA staying constant, we have not received any update on that data. The state did point us to a website that has preliminary CLAs, but they're the same numbers that we used last year. That number typically comes out around December 15th, but the last few years, it has been running about two weeks late.
Anyone? Any thoughts?
Good job.
Do we have a capital plan? Like, what do we need to be working on?
Improvement plan?
Yeah.
There's something about the roof, I thought.
No, that's fixed.
No?
Thank you for letting us do that.
So we did look at the capital plan a little bit last month, and the big items on that was the gymnasium upgrades. Many of the items were smaller that we were planning on doing with our repairs budget, that's part of our budget. We did increase that from 95 to 125 to handle a lot of those smaller projects.
But if we're gonna, we're gonna take care of the sound in the gym and get that straightened around, we need to do the bleachers as well, and hopefully have that done for a while.
Can we move a portion of the tuition to the bleachers and still give us a little protection on that tuition?
So I have right now $220,000 in there, so I mean, if we move, say, just around a hundred thousand to the bleachers, it doesn't impact the budget at all, the money's already in there. We would just move it to repairs, and then next year, we would move it back to tuition.
And what does, what was, do we have any bleacher cost?
It's in the, yes, I need to find it. It was in the, I shared it the last meeting.
I thought it was in the 60s, or something like that.
Do you have that right there, Louis?
I don't.
In front of you? Yes, you do.
I don't know. Was that in an email that you sent?
It's in the last board packet, so I'll just find it.
Can you read it? I can't read that.
Oh.
It's way too small.
Way too small? I can do that.
You didn't do that on purpose, did you?
No.
Okay.
Oh, it is really small.
Yes.
I can't read this either. Holy shitey.
Good, I'm glad you're...
No, this is so small.
Bleachers, it says 50, new automatic gym bleachers.
Yes, 50. 50,000?
Which actually isn't a ton considering. Give or take, that's estimates two years old.
I mean, I would say move 60 over to the bleacher project, if, I don't know how everyone else feels about that.
That's a good idea.
Move that guy. 60,000 to the bleachers out of the tuition bucket.
When you say the bleachers, is it on both sides now that we're talking? It's just the one side needs to be fixed?
Nothing's gonna change as far as the seating goes. Gonna update it.
Yeah, 'cause it's been there for a long time, right, Jeff?
It has been there for a long time.
30 years, I think.
And right from, right from day one, the people would come in and sit on those, and that bends them. And so, it's the taxpayers that paid for them, it's the taxpayer that, you know, so I used to have a guy come from New Hampshire and work on them like every three years. I'm sure they're due for...
I mean, Jeff, do you mind sharing how old they are?
You were saying 25, 30 years.
They're over, about 25 years old.
I mean, they've been, you took care of them.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they got their use.
Yeah.
It's due, they're due.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've got their use.
And if we're gonna be doing the sound in there and everything, let's get the bleachers fixed, and that area should be set for a while.
Yeah, that's why we were getting estimates due out of our own local funds to, for painting the gym too, just to get that off.
Okay.
That's great.
I'm comfortable with that. Any thoughts? Down, that you're crunching.
Joy, I miss you.
I was just thinking about the tuition aspect of it. I mean, kinda like having three kids, and they're spread out, so you get that reprieve with years. Do we deliver that as a one-time savings back to the taxpayer, not understanding we gotta jump it back up next year?
Um...
So I was trying to evaluate, I mean, I know we gotta do some work around here, but do we wanna, you know, if we chop off the other 140, we're getting down to like only about a cent raise in the property taxes. Is that prudent, or should we invest anywhere in the building, in the interim?
With that, 220 even?
Well, yeah, I mean, we just took 60 of it, so.
I guess the question is, how come we have, what, 125 in the maintenance, and that's projects, like not necessarily just regular maintenance?
That's just routine. Yeah, projects, I mean, my recommendation would be to keep that buffer in there, just because it's a lot, I mean, if your budget was already up 5, 6%, I would say, let's take some of that out, but considering you're only up 2, 2 and change, and that's in really good shape, the state is saying that we're gonna be, everyone's gonna be up 12%, obviously Rutland Town isn't. I think it's gonna be a lot harder to, for the taxpayers to swallow a huge increase next year, when there may be other factors that are increasing your budget next year, at least this piece won't impact them as much.
Yeah, it'd be kinda like a false hope for what the tax rate would always be.
And then, you said the other conversation was the 8th grade trip, which is, I feel is kinda new to me, so I don't know, maybe, was there a conversation on that? I know we covered the 7th grade, right, in the budget already?
So this year, we have two trips planned, we were hoping to do three, but we're gonna do two trips, Boston for a day, and then Educational Day at Great Escape, and that's about $350 per student, so families have been fundraising for that. So families have been fundraising for that. Um, and I just wanted to see the, what the board's thoughts were of possibly budgeting for that. So there, it's just included. Um, I think we, every year we've struggled with, um, getting all students and families participating in fundraising, which upsets a lot of parents, like quite a few parents that reached out after parent teacher and student-led conferences, that it's only, and it's always the same parents volunteering, and it's true. It always is every year. It's the same parents that step up. So they were just voiced, and I hear it every year. So I just said, I will ask the board and see what their thoughts are.
Now, do we pay for other grades' trips besides?
So we, what we budget for is a bus for every grade.
Yeah.
So, and then parents often pay a small fee for a field trip. Um, if not, we cover that through guidance or other donations. And we cover that through the school if that's a hardship for a family. So we will pay for one bus to the Great Escape and back. That's already budgeted for, but it's to the Great Escape and the Boston trip and...
Is there only, the Boston trip bus won't be covered?
No, 'cause we do one trip and we're gonna do, um, a premier bus for them. So we're trying to do something extra for them as an eighth grader, especially since we're not doing overnight trips.
Going on, on that one?
It's kinda hard to budget that because every year it might be a different amount. So, I mean, it won't be negative.
I think we've already created a circular whipsaw of, A, they came to us, we step back, it's not our decision about what they're gonna do. We can't enforce teachers' participation and the overnight aspect. So I think, and we're just, it's gonna be a ripple every year of them coming, parent groups coming to the board, and is it a good year, is it a bad year? Like, are we choosing to support a certain class or not? I'm not that excited to talk about it tonight, but potentially maybe in the spring after the budget of like, where do we wanna go with the eighth grade trip? Do we wanna make it something? And like, I think the board would weigh in on what that something is then, as far as if we're gonna pay for it, we're gonna support it. It should be something the same every year, and it should be the same dollar commitment, whether it's everybody or not, versus, you know, each group gets to pick their own trips and then brings it up to us for money. And I, I think it could open up a lot of, it's gonna, it's gonna create a lot of animosity with each parent group that comes in unless we decide, we're gonna say, this is the eighth grade trip, this is how it's getting paid for. I, they're focused on the budget right now. And potentially, as we come into the spring, and depending on where the surplus looks like, maybe look to help them then. But I don't wanna set this example of, we're hoping for donor help money. Or having every parent group every year in here taking up two or three board meetings. Not that, it's not important. I feel like that's just where we're headed.
No, I mean, it is a challenge.
Like a table until after.
Yeah, I don't think there's a, a real palette for the, a deep conversation on that, at this moment, personally.
Yeah, maybe a conversation.
I mean, I'm willing to revisit it in the spring. I think, I mean, I think it's an important sort of, you know, um, something that people do look back and reminisce on when it comes to Rutland Town. But I feel like the fundraising was a challenge, has been a challenge for a significant number of years, not just this particular time or this particular...
It's every year.
Yeah.
Right, it's every year, and that's why I just said I'll bring it to board.
So it's something I'm willing to discuss in the spring.
Yeah, or maybe there's some other, like, way to talk about fundraising that's not a board concern. Just put it on a parent concern, you know?
Yeah, 'cause I mean, I, I feel like we took, we did the seventh grade piece to try to give a broader scope of time for them, for people to fundraise. There might've been some overlap, but I don't really feel like that picked... I mean, you could start fundraising in third grade for that matter, if you really want, start, start building that out.
Yeah, there was a time where we had money that followed kids through their grades.
We do.
Still do.
Yeah, I know, like, um, Mrs., the sixth grade teacher is Mrs. Turner, um, has always sold like, um, fudge phenomenal mushroom shrooms. So the kids will do that, so it gives them a little money. So they did have a pocket of money, not a lot. And I don't know off the top of my head, but we do. We implemented that over years ago, that that money follows them.
Yeah, there's gotta be a way.
Um, excellent, yeah. Let's, uh, put that on the docket for as soon as the budget is in hand and feel uncomfortable. Uh, but we have got, we got the bleachers covered, right?
Yep.
And there any, do we wanna go deeper into the other conversation or take Louis's recommendation on?
Well, I, I don't have the capital improvement plan. Are there any inflationary things in there coming down the line that would make sense to spend since we have the money this year versus, you know, we get to it three years from now and it's 18% more?
Can we get a larger...
I can see it. Are these already in there or what's the color showing?
Yeah, 'cause we've done a lot here in the year. The school looks pretty good, doesn't it?
We could definitely talk to Kelly about next year since we'll have that extra money in there if there's any projects that need to happen to bring those to the board about doing them earlier.
Yeah, just, 'cause like, everything's gonna be more expensive down the line. Get it out or we bank it as a surplus to offset the tuition a year from now, so.
Yeah, I like that idea.
I think on that, we probably should wait until we see what we have at the end of the year to spend. I don't think we should wreck the budget too much. You know, we're gonna do the bleachers and we're doing the sound system. That's pretty good. We did the floor this year.
Yeah, 'cause with the school financing, things are a little bit up in the air and... We wanna sell the house.
I think we've done quite a bit, a lot more than we have done in the past.
Yeah. We've gotten a lot done in the year. Upkeep.
Are we looking to approve this tonight, Louis, or?
No.
Okay. So I would just say, if Kelly wants, if Kelly has any input, because there's one line or one bucket that says like possible, you know, for 2027 or whatever, um, if he wants to weigh in on that, then we can have that discussion. And then just try to stay within the, you know, that parameter that, 'cause I think that was like $96,000, you know, so from 60 to 96.
He has, so green is priority one, and then blue is two. So he has prioritized these.
Yeah.
No, but the colors run.
Remember that.
Okay. So just have him share with us at the next meeting before we approve the budget.
What he would like for a big ticket item, like excluding...
Could be.
I'm, can you clarify what you would like him to?
I could discuss with him.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, I mean, there, there says like, possibilities add to the budget. One was bleachers, um, and then it was like partitions and something else. It was like $92,000. If, if that is what would make him happy, then I would, I would say we can revisit that at the next meeting.
Louis, I see what you're talking, it's on the right-hand side.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 gotcha.
So if you can just chat with him about that, since we don't have to make a decision.
To move forward with bleachers though, and the...
Move forward with the bleachers, moving that 60,000. And if there's any other things that he sees as high priority for this particular budget with what we have to work with, then we can entertain that. Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. Anything else, Louis, budget-wise?
No.
Anyone else? All right, moving on. Superintendent's report. Oh, sorry. Chris, can I just, do you wanna mention real quick about the email that we sent out for, as a communication committee regarding the budget?
Um, oh, wait a minute. You mean the QR code or something?
Yeah, or you asked if we could talk about the communication committee?
Yeah.
That was, that was the moment I wanted to mention that.
I could mention that. Our communication committee of, three of us are on it, plus a woman, um, from Wells, Amanda Whedon, who's really the spearhead of the communication committee. She's the chair of that. And we've met several times already. And each time we meet, it's a couple hours long on a, um, Google Meet that's warned and everything. Um, we talk about how to communicate with our citizens in the GRCSUs, all the people in the, that we cover. And, um, we've come up, she's created this, um, what is it called? Mail, well, she's created like a, a site that you can subscribe to that has all sorts of information up, that come from the superintendent and about our schools. It's, um, in order to access it, you have to use a QR code. And it's called MailChimp is the QR code that gets you to that information. I have just, I have it on my computer. I don't know if we need to share what it looks like. It's very formalized and it's informational. So we're hoping people will subscribe. If you subscribe to it, you get an email with all this information that's so well organized and factual that comes from our GRCSU.
It's really, it's basically another medium to take information that some, if someone went on the, the SU website or onto one of our websites, they'd come across like budget information, upcoming meetings, minutes, agendas, you know, things like that. This is a medium for, for you to just have that sent to your email or sent via text if we end up going that direction.
Yeah, rather than you having to look for it, it will come to you.
It'll prompt you.
And...
So...
Yeah.
So as a communication committee at the SU level, you know, our attempt is to broaden our, our scope of, uh, people that we are able to, um, to touch for that matter. Yeah, to reach. So, um, I guess just take that moment to encourage, uh, our board members and as well as like, uh, you know, their friends and neighbors and things to start to sign up for this. So I could text you, Jeff, like, it'll be a QR code and, you know, next time you run into a few people, just have them sign up. And it goes, 'cause, you know, it's all information, it's public info and, and it's a great resource. But I myself don't always go onto the particular website, you know?
There's actually gonna be a, um, what day is the senior luncheon? Which we...
That would be a great day too.
Anticipate a large crowd.
Oh.
So that would be a great time to...
Oh, yes. So it's at 11 o'clock.
11 o'clock? What day?
Uh, Tuesday the 16th.
Oh, okay, that's possible. I, 11 o'clock Tuesday. So like if I came, Jeff, I could, um, have a little spot and I could ask people if they wanna sign up for this? Yeah. We could have the QR code posted.
There should be a, um, I've been helping Mike with that a little bit.
Thank you.
And, um...
That's so nice.
We're working on, um, getting those numbers up.
Yep.
And getting, getting more people involved, which in turn we could give them more information.
Yeah, people wanna be informed, I really believe that. And I love that, um, senior luncheon is a great social event.
And it's probably the demographic that we're looking to reach.
Yeah. What was that, Jeff?
In the, during the winter months, we're gonna be, a couple people and myself are gonna be cooking the lunches.
That, where's that gonna happen?
At the fire station.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
So I think it's really valuable and I hope people will sign up for the, um...
But it's just using that end of it is another way to get the message out to people.
Yeah. It's called GRCSU, uh, Communication. And, um, this current one is about how budgets are created. There's all sorts of frequently asked questions about budget. Um, I think, I find it fascinating. I hope people will sign up.
I'm glad we brought it up, 'cause that gives us an avenue to try to get some more.
Yeah, the QR code is on our school website. Um, when Lauren, um, sends out the newsletter, the bi-weekly newsletter, and it's in the lobby and it's at the Public Library in Rutland. It's at Town Hall and it's on the Town, um, Hall website, the Town website, the Rutland Town website. If you go to the school page, it's there.
There's a link too, for those of you who don't know how to use a QR code, that some may not, so they, there's a hyperlink, they can just click the website.
Okay.
And add themselves if they don't have a phone.
Yeah.
Especially when you're talking to senior lunch, they may not...
Yeah, I could show how to do that.
They may not be up to speed on clicking a button.
Yeah.
Or if they're willing, you could take their email address and then send them the link, 'cause maybe you like a computer and email, if it's not on their phone.
I'll have it too, I could do it for them right then and there. So I'll plan on that.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
I mean, honestly, we should be trying to get that list up for Rutland Town residents. That way, the closer we get to town meeting day, we can just be pushing out, budget-specific, here's the tax rate change, as soon as we get things more ironed out from the state. So people, that's the biggest concern, where can I find information? If we feed it to them?
They won't be some made questions.
They're reading the paper right now that says 12% property tax increase. And we're gonna show them less than three, depending on yield shifts between here and there. Substantial difference between what they're gonna read in the paper, yeah.
Okay.
If they're thinking about a repeat of two years ago and just saying no across the board in the state. Let's, let's get selective.
Great. Oh.
But at some point too, in our communications, maybe after the budget, we should be explaining to Rutland Town residents that our incentive is disappearing every year. So we're gonna have some upward pressure on our budget. Last year we had 18 cents off, this year it's 14, next year it's 11. We're, we got a five-year reprieve that's going to disappear at some point.
I have one more thing. I would like to be able to ask the, um, town manager if this QR code could go in the town report. So I just would like to make maybe a motion to be able to ask that I, or someone can approach the, uh, town to put it in the town report.
I don't think we need a motion for that, do we? No.
Okay.
It's fine. If they're willing to do it, then...
I could contact them and see if there's space in there.
Yep.
Okay.
Chris?
Uh, I'll be, I'll be real quick. A lot of the, my report is informative. Uh, I have included a couple items in the local board resource folder. Uh, the, the not redistricting task force has released its final report, uh, which is, which we knew. Uh, we also saw, you know, the, the governor's reaction to that report as well. So we do expect a, um, an interesting legislative session. Uh, you know, so, um, we'll kinda see where, where everything lands. For those that did not wanna read the full report, I did provide a brief synopsis and kind of overview with my reports as well, some highlights. Uh, as well as I put, the VSBA had a, uh, position paper, just so you could see where the VSBA, uh, what their stance is around Act 73 moving forward. Uh, and we do know that that's speaking large as one organization. It's more of a statewide response. Obviously, districts and, uh, SUs may have, uh, differing viewpoints in terms of, uh, the task force proposal and what's next. But it's something that we should be keeping a close, very close eye on as we move into legislative session. Uh, I know at the GRCSU board meeting, we did discuss that we will be inviting our local senators and representatives to the next GRCSU board meeting. Um, and I know that, uh, I think, you know, the members of board that were at the SU board meeting discussed possibly, you know, gaining some topics for consideration that's on behalf of the Rutland Town Board that we could ask the senators or representatives, or just bring some things to their attention. So I don't know, um, if Tim, that's just something you just want them just emailed to you and, um, just collect a master list or however you wanna handle that, but...
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I mean, or they could, uh, or send it, they're all gonna end up to you anyway.
Send it to me and then, because Eric Maupren, the GRCSU chair, I could just craft an invite and then send that out, but, uh...
Yeah, there's, if there's questions that, uh, you would like, uh, considered to bring up to the representatives and senators that may likely attend our SU meeting, then I'd say you can email to me or you can email Chris and just CC me on it just so I know that that dialogue has happened and I don't have to follow up on it. You know, like I say, in pre- You know, like I say, in previous times, I felt, I've, they have this impression that we're just coming at that and like, you know, just unloading, unleashing on them, and, uh, and it just becomes contentious at times, so our hope or expectation was like, if we can deliver them a handful of questions, at least they can come with some, you know, more in-depth answers and thoughts versus just, you know, the, the typical talking point that you might find coming out of Montpelier, so. So if there are anything specific or things that, you know, your, your neighborhood or group of, uh, you know, fellow parents and taxpayers have questions about, so.
And our goal would be sending out that invite probably, uh, mid to end of next week. So we have some time to think about that and just to see. Uh, I know there are a lot of strong thoughts on what we should be asking, what we should be holding count, particularly around cost drivers, I know healthcare is always, is a concern, uh, amongst, uh, you know, our staff and our taxpayers, but, um, you know, there are other, you know, things that they should be discussing. And regardless, we're looking at the next steps for schools in Vermont. Um, cuz we, like I said, we know that the registered task force had put together this more, these, these reading approaches. Um, but I know there's people who really strongly believe in consolidation and closure and they draw a new map, so just, um, but it's, so. I know that the task force, one of the things that they put in their final report is they listened to the Vermonters, and that's one of the reasons why their report was what it was, was the fact that this is in direct response to the five thousand Vermont individuals that they spoke to and felt that this was a path forward. But so it, voices are being heard, so if people have some very strong opinions, please, there are multiple ways, whether talking to your board members, representatives, senators, uh, people are listening and, uh, you know, particularly as we're looking at what this looks like for the, in the next five, ten years for the state of Vermont, so. And the last thing is just, uh, there will be a letter, uh, as part of our budget communication, uh, we've, we've sent out next week, just soliciting feedback on the budgets, directing website, that's something which Linda and Colin and we can also look at, you know, sharing through this, the MailChimp, the newsletter that goes out as well. Uh, links to this as well, so, cuz I do believe that Amanda is drawing a lot of links right from our website, so this'll just be another way for us to get that information out to people, so. Great.
Principal's report?
All right, um, so Lifetime Sports, just an update there, thanks to Colin and Bailey and Keith for their help. They, um, popped into our faculty meeting yesterday and we got to work. And our teachers were amazing and stayed extra late to work out groups for PICO, we're excited. Um, shout out to the Rutland Town Police Department too, because I talked to Lynette last week and she's, um, now that they can do fingerprints and stuff at the PD station, they're able to move those forward a little quickly, more quickly, so thank you to, um, our Rutland Town Police Department. Um, we had great participation, um, although we didn't have internet, it was not, we, we persevered and we had great participation for our parent, teacher and student-led conferences. Uh, we're continuing with our, um, character assemblies, um, and then for the holidays, um, our seventh and eighth graders, um, usually, um, every year they ask for, um, some money from parents to shop for some needy Rutland Town families. So we work with Mrs. Sabaka and Ms. Manneville on, um, families that may be in need for some items for the holidays. And, um, this is probably the only two times we ask for that, cuz it's more transactional. Um, but our kids do so much throughout the years in giving back, so just to name a few things, um, last year for um, I's Plan, we had a number of kids that helped, um, with the picnic tables and a number of things up at Northwood Painting for Mr. Rowe, um, as part of a service learning project there. We've had kids write, um, cards to veterans, uh, this year the seventh and eighth graders as well, independent study, uh, are writing, um, cards for our Rutland Town seniors that are coming. Um, and they're also doing some decorations and placemats, so some of them, thank you to Ms. Esslinger and Mrs. Hogan, had to, uh, remind the students of what a greeting card is, a few students made comments like, well, my mom just prints the, our pictures for Christmas and mails them out, so that was kind of eye-opening that we have some teaching to do from that point. Um, and then I did get, um, a couple of parents, um, and a teacher had told me last week that a student brought in, um, fifty dollars of his own money, um, to donate towards the families in need. And, uh, because she had shared that, you know, she tells her children that, you know, not everybody may have the same holidays as us, and, you know, there's a lot of kids that maybe not get anything, and he was just shocked that the kids are getting essentials, so socks, underwear, um, shampoo, conditioner and one toy. So he came and gave his TA teacher, um, his, his own money, which is pretty telling. So again, this is, um, we used to go downtown and shop in person, I used to go with Mr. Rowe and Mrs. Bizzetti and I would go and shop with the students, but unfortunately, the way things have changed, I think the last time we went, a lot of the sizes weren't available and then we weren't finding what we needed, um, so we do that online. But that's why we try to incorporate other aspects of giving and service, not just this one transactional piece, but that is something that we've done in seventh and eighth grade. Uh, but we do a lot of other things here that I think, um, help us make kind, hard-working, well-rounded kids. Um, EST meetings are continuing, Colby's doing a great job with that, as well as our EST committee. Uh, Winter Fast Bridge will happen in January and we come back from break. Um, and then there's a data review meeting, um, on the eleventh of February. There's an update here for the physical plant, so we have, um, by the end of this week, I was thinking it was completed, we have to do lead testing in water, so that'll be done at the end of the week, the roof repair is done. Um, Linda saw some of that happening at the PTO event.
Yeah, that was amazing.
Mr. Hescock and I popped into the PTO event, um, which was great, but we were happy the roof company could come fix it and they could do it on a weekend because it was a lot, but it was right in front of where everybody was entering in the cafeteria. But they got that done lickety-split, which is great. HVAC work is continuing, some more things are gonna happen, um, over break. The window was replaced today, today it was finally like finished, the window where Lauren sits, um, because the original one was broken during the install. Um, Kelly usually refinishes the gym floor during December break, so he's gonna do that, we got all of the materials for that. And there's a number of happening celebrations and upcoming events here, um, so we, oh, we did have a great, um, in-service on Friday, it's great, and we're just able to spend some time, um, as a building. We have the concert tomorrow night, weather-dependent, we're hoping everything goes, cuz we have a full schedule tomorrow. Um, if not, we will have to move that to Thursday to communicate with families later this afternoon. Um, as Jeff, you mentioned, the Rutland Town Senior Luncheon is happening, um, and we have, let's see, uh, Middle School Chorus is performing for the Rutland American Legion, and I believe also for the Rotary, um, and so a band and chorus, um, let's see, anything else? I think that's about it. And I'm not sure if I put this in here, I may have forgotten, but I wanted to thank or congratulate, um, Erin Adet, because I don't know if I said it the last time, um, Rutland Town Marching Band got first place in the Halloween Parade for Best Costume Marching Band.
That was amazing.
Yeah, yeah, they are, they sound, yeah.
Ozzy Osbourne.
Ozzy Osbourne, mhm, yeah. They sounded so good, and even when the Agency of Ed and Liquor and Lottery were here, some of them were a little delayed because they got stuck behind the marchers, they were all practicing. And one woman's like, I stayed out for a little bit because they were so good, like, I was just amazed, and there's over seventy kids in that band. It's, uh, it's great.
Yeah.
So I thought I added that in there, but I must have forgotten.
Yeah, we were out there when we were going around.
Yeah.
About, I said to my wife, I says, they're not all here yet. You had the lower grades?
Yeah, the little girls.
Wait till, I said, probably later in the week they'll have everybody up.
Yeah, yeah, they were good. My niece, uh, is in the marching band for another school, I won't name which one, and she was like, oh no, we're stuck by in the parade. She's like, the Rutland Town Band again! She was like, I hate this, like Erin always wins, they sound so good.
Yeah, she does a great job.
I was like, you're right. Uh, so we're, we're always in need of subs, if anybody out there wants to substitute, we'd love to have you. We're also looking for a kindergarten parent educator, so I have interviews tomorrow, um, afternoon and evening right before the concerts. Our numbers are the same as they've been since the start of the school year. We have a good chunk of tuition kids, and I kept our nine through twelve enrollment in there as well for you guys, one hundred and sixty-five.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, uh, so next up personnel, vacancies, uh, which are informational, and also, uh, we just, um, got two retirements which are also informational, but I just wanted to make mention, um, that, uh, Ms. Swinier will be retiring, uh, at the end of this year. And Roseanne uh, will be retiring at the end of, uh, this year, so December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. So a bit of a hole in that, uh, elementary wing. All right, uh, so no older new business for tonight, primarily just focused on the budget. Uh, upcoming meeting will be January thirteenth, which is our normal Tuesday. I was still waiting on, uh, pre-town meeting date to be determined, so keep a lookout for that. Uh, I don't see any staff or community, uh, so, uh, we do have an executive session tonight for contracts, and I will look for a motion to enter executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.